To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. We are a little short-staffed today. Sure, yeah, if you don't mind.
All right, we'll do it, we'll do attendance. President Shane Bailey.
President.
Vice President Jane Barco.
President.
Shayna Delaney, absent. Darren Howell, absent. Donald Miller.
Here.
Teresa Stratton.
Here.
Randy Thorp.
Here.
Ray Chip Nirella.
Here.
Attorney Chris Farrell, absent. Sheldon Golsky, here. And Treasurer Heather Press, absent.
She's secretary now.
I'm sorry, our treasurer, oh my goodness.
Any worries?
It's okay, Shelley.
Thank you, Shelley. Uh, we're gonna move things around a little bit. We have Jason Woods here to give us a little presentation for the park project. Jason, the floor is yours.
I haven't heard the best place to stand. Does one of you want to be back here or back in there?
Can you stand on the table?
You can push that table back if that helps.
Sure, um, I'll probably do this in a funny order. Actually, I'll do this first, so... I brought with me, um, we have, I believe this is Phase One. It is a Wayside Park. Um, we have a set of plans, I have the bid documents, and then, um, you're required by PA law to get a, to have a written ENS plan and have it reviewed by the Conservation District. So I have an application for that. Um, they've been kind enough to waive fees because you're a municipality in Wayne County. Um, I have an erosion and sediment control narrative and, um, some renderings of, uh, and I believe you asked for these last time we were chatting on the phone, um, of the PlayWorld playground that we're hoping to put in there. And I have a couple, uh, forms here that were required to get signed, um, by you and your solicitor. Um, I'll go over those. And I supplied, uh, one of them, I believe, to you to, um, have this sign. I have to take those, upload all this information as long as it's good and, um, you guys are all happy with it. And then DCNR will take it out 30 days to approve it and will simultaneously, you know, send the plans over to the Conservation District for review. And at that point, um, I believe we could move to bid for 30 days. Um, but yeah, we all want to make sure we...
He needs that paperwork immediately because what is the, uh, what is the end that you're gonna apply?
Oh, this is for that grant you're talking about. We'll talk about that in a minute. Yep. Um, and then it's good that Joe is here. Um, to me, this has just been a renovation of a park. Um, it's an existing park. Uh, the district it's in, it allows for a permitted use of a park. Um, so we're treating it as that. We're not, uh, I didn't think that we needed to get, um, a permit application over to you for a sign or anything like that. So we do have a kiosk. But other than that, no thing qualifies, so... Sounds like that's gonna be our only permit is through, uh, Conservation District, so... Um, I have, I'll leave all this stuff with you. I have a couple copies. This is the Conservation District application and you would just sign the bottom, print your name, date it, um, as long as...
Is Chrissy signing something?
No.
Did you, did that, when you took over, Chris, did he sign it?
Um, he signed the PNDI. Chris, I don't think has, he provided me the title sign, form sign, but not the, the certificate of bid components. Um, if it's okay with you guys, I'll, I'll hand these around. These are the, these are the renderings. Um, so everybody knows, um, they actually already have a squirrel and a bumblebee that were installed just a few years ago. Uh, spring rider toys for children. Um, we're gonna reuse those. We're gonna provide rubber mulch and then, um, some port-in-place rubber as a better ADA access. Um, because the rubber mulch that's kinda chipped up, um, does count as an ADA surface. But we wanna make it as easy as possible for people of all abilities and ages to interact with, with their children and enjoy the park. Um, so we have a nice new play structure, a fire truck, Freddie Fire Truck there because it's...
It's 100th anniversary this year of the Fire Company. So that's a very...
Yep, we'll reuse those too. And then I'll talk about Phase Two. We have a grant application together, um, for expanding this, providing a pavilion, um, closing off some of the parking, um, so people can drive through. There seems to be a danger, actually. Is it, um, between Belmont and South Street, people shooting through, right?
Uh, Water Street.
Water Street, excuse me. And, um, we're gonna add another top play item, a train, which is great. Trying to tie into your local areas.
We want the train, we want the train.
Um, yeah, I can pass this around. You guys can all take a look at it if you'd like. There's multiple renderings. So before I get ahead of myself...
The world is full of paperwork.
Yeah, I'm sorry about this. I wanna make sure I cover everything. Um, DCNR asked, actually, that we fill out this summary of costs as we do the project. It includes our professional services to design the project and then also accounts for the money you've received from DCNR and that you had in matching. Um, we, we received $90,000 from DCNR and we had that you would provide $60,000 as a match under their Small Communities Program. Um, we got everything together as you've asked and, uh, I believe it'll actually, the grand total with our professional services and the playground as you see it would come in around $170,000, $175,000, so we're a little over budget. I, uh, have the plans here. I wanted to show you guys. I didn't realize there'd be so many notes here. This is good, we're not on wage. I also have the CoStarz orders. So CoStarz is a state-approved vendor and we're able to order stuff from them that they offer, like benches and other park amenities. Um, they actually offer through PlayWorld, which is out of Lewisburg, a company that'll, not only will PlayWorld manufacture and sell you the play equipment under the CoStarz program, so the prices are already negotiated and quite low. They also offer, uh, a person who'll come up and install all of that. So I have the, the pricing for that, create a sign. And, um, that includes the rubber surfacing and the port-in-place rubber. And so the port-in-place rubber, um, we were gonna put at the bottom of slides, um, next to the future swing set and then around the top play areas. It's about $23 a square foot. Uh, now, um, it went up again this past year, which, you know, I thought about doing bathroom tile, but, uh... Um, so I was gonna actually just mark this up and I was gonna say, hey, why don't we not put the port-in-place rubber around Freddie Fire Truck? And we'll just put it out to the entry of the larger structure and at the base of slides? And, um, the way we have it designed right now, the port-in-place, purchased and installed is $16,000. I wanna go back to them and say, hey, we're gonna cut that down to about an eighth and we'll fill it all with rubber mulch. Um, so you'll still have your port-in-place, people will still be able to get to everything. Um, I didn't wanna take that out of the design yet and go back to him because I wanted to assure you guys that we're doing the best we can and giving the community the best possible park. And now we'll kinda try to dial it back gracefully and profitably, so... If that's okay with you guys, I try to save you $8,000 or $10,000.
Well, we need them.
Yeah. Um, then we'll, we'll be more or less in line with our budget, hopefully, when we go to bid. If it's okay with you, I'll just do that.
Sure.
But I'll leave these plans here as a draft.
Do you think we need a, a motion to go to bid or just go ahead and do it?
Um, I would, yeah, I'd ask that you make a motion. Yep, one and down. Um, I'd make a motion to have Shane sign the application.
Okay.
Chris Farrell to sign the certification of compliance with bid requirements. I filled this out and gave it to him, so you know, Shane, uh, you're over, you, this project's gonna be over the total, um, PA bidding threshold for municipality, over $25,000.
Right.
We have to put it out for a competitive bid. We are utilizing CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program to purchase equipment? Check that. A cooperative purchasing program to have someone install it via labor. And then the total project cost exceeds $25,000, so we'll be using PA prevailing wage. So if I could get you to sign this and a motion, and a motion for Chris to sign that, and then I also have, I should have the CoStarz orders here and I'll have you sign one. Both to sign both, but I'll have you sign one and I'll send you the revised order price at a cheaper cost once I get that word. Less expensive, right? Well, maybe I didn't...
It's amazing how much this costs.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So Jane, this is the message I left for you. This is the CoStarz purchase.
Yeah.
For, excuse me, the ADA picnic tables, trash cans.
Okay.
So you have him sign that and then I would, um, I will have George Ely reach out to you for the 50% down and to make sure it ships to the right place.
Okay.
And then this is the one that I won't have you sign. You can look at it, though. It's the PlayWorld items, the surfacing and everything, and then how much it is to install. But this one, we're gonna try to reuse the cost.
Okay.
Well, let's not pass it around then, so nobody signs it. So I'd like to make a motion that we give authority to our President Shane Bailey to sign the paperwork that Jason Wood has submitted to him concerning the Wayside Park project. I also, in the motion, I also would instruct our solicitor to sign the documentation so we can proceed with, uh, putting the, the project out to bid. Okay?
Motion was made by Jane, seconded by Randy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nays, abstentions?
Shelley, did you get the motion?
This one I'll just take to Chris.
I kinda did.
Yeah, sure.
I think we're on that.
But this one, you can read it, sign that.
Uh, yep, yep, here you go. It's the same thing. I have two copies of everything. That and then, um...
I'll just take this to Chris.
Yep, and then the application. This one's hot. Thank you so much. Um, do you all prefer that, um, I get the rest of this signed and submitted and then, uh, we revisit for, uh, a vote to, to put it out to bid? Or do you guys wanna make that motion?
I, I made that, I made that.
That was included?
Yes, out to bid.
Sure. Time to go. I'll get it out to bid. I, um, am gonna rely on your administration here. Um, I'll send a paper ad, a copy, and you'll have to run it in the paper place.
Okay.
That'd be great. Yeah, some information on that.
Um, yeah, and we'd like to have the construction this fall if possible.
Yeah.
So that we have, next year, we have a, uh, celebration of 250th anniversary of our country plus 175th anniversary of the borough.
Sure.
Probably still in the time.
Yeah, and once, once the advertising goes up, um, we all know contractors, right? And so I encourage you to call them. I know I'll, uh, um, drop a few informal emails and things to get...
Does it take a special contractor to do this?
So in this case, um, I would say we really want a pavement contractor or a concrete contractor because most of the work's gonna be done by the PlayWorld folks.
Okay.
There'll just be adjustments to the pavement, a walkway, and setting up the, um, picnic tables and trash or something.
Are there any questions from other people on the council?
So... I'm sorry to turn my back on this.
So will we out to bid, um, next month?
Yeah, I think so.
And then awarded possibly in July?
Yeah.
They're gonna take all the stones and roots and everything out that's there?
Yes, the, uh, in the area that they're gonna be working. They're primarily gonna be working in the parking area.
Yeah.
And along that asphalt and out, out the road that goes through. And, um, we, we will, uh, remove those, um, spring toys. They'll fill the holes in with soil and put, uh, our plans include putting mulch on top of it. That's gonna stay intact till Phase Two.
They're pretty old, those spring toys. I hate to tell you.
Yeah.
Uh, I remember where you put them in.
They still got a little spring in them.
Just don't sit on them in any use.
If we start installing them in there in that bad a shape, I'll work that out with you and George Eli and we can try to get some kind of replacement. But I looked at them, I think they're pretty good. Phase Two...
Well, we had one that collapsed.
Okay.
That's one.
Okay.
Well, thank you, sir.
Well, yeah, and the only other thing is this Phase Two. And the resolution...
All right, we need a resolution for Phase Two. Would you read the resolution to him slowly and I'll...
Yeah, sure, so, um...
He's trying to apply for another grant from...
DCED.
DCED, that's Department of Community and Economic Development.
Excellent, so I, I'll leave this with you two.
It's under the Greenways, right, program?
Yep, yep. Greenways Trails and Recreation. Um, I have a description that I wrote up for it and so, uh, this one, though, is not in their Small Communities, um, application. You would be asking for $250,000 and the local shared cash match, um, is 15, $52,800. You can request a waiver for that, but they won't allow you to ask for more than $250,000. And we're proposing a pavilion, additional park equipment, a lighting system, and some other items. And it, it's gonna cost, we believe, around $302,000.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, this is the first time here.
And the lights?
The lights.
Didn't we talk about on the phone call?
Yeah.
Didn't we talk about if we didn't sell the poles, we could use the poles?
We...
Wasn't that mentioned in the phone when we had our...
We have some 60-foot poles.
Oh, the wooden ones, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't we mention that, or I think Darren said something about it during that phone?
We have four in the park already that have to be, are going to be moved, right? Where they have the sign up, that sign up, it's just, there's two poles there.
Okay.
So how many poles are we talking about? What you'll need?
Well, so all I have in here is that, uh, is the lighting runs and, uh, I would have my, my subcontractor design all that, make sure it's, they don't want a lot of voltage drop, all that kinda stuff. And we can work to reuse poles and things. Um, we'll probably select, um, you know, just an industry standard light for a park.
Okay.
But I can bring it to you and you can say, okay, but we could use the wooden ones with a, with a, you know, doos neck head or something.
Yeah.
I can leave that up to you later.
Okay.
We can wait till we're funded. I can leave this with you two, well, if you want. But you can see, um, the half-basketball court extending the walkways from Phase One. That's what this is. Extending the walkway, a pavilion. We're gonna reuse those, uh, swings. Um, but we wanna make sure we get you that ADA seat for the sign.
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were like, oh, hey.
Is there any other questions from the, uh, from the council? And how about, is anything in the audience that wants to comment or ask for Jason the question while he's here? Do you wanna read the resolution?
Would you like me to? This, this is, uh, just a boilerplate resolution that I used from DCED's documents. But it says, "Be it resolved, the Waymart Borough in Wayne County, Pennsylvania, hereby requests, um, a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant of $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Wayside Park Phase Two Development Project. Uh, be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate, uh, Mr. Shane Bailey, Borough Council, Council President, and Ms. Jane Barco, Borough Council Vice President, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements on behalf of the borough with the Commonwealth Financing Authority." And then there's some information, whoever the treasurer is and whoever records the notes. Um, we just need to put the date and...
So that would be 2025-2, correct?
Would you look?
I, well, I put dash two, but what, what do I title it?
Wayside Borough.
Wayside Park Phase Two.
Okay.
I have a question.
All right.
What's, what's the final cost and what is the, um, the cost of the borough?
Sure, so, uh, originally when we did the, was it PRPS, Jane, right? The Park and Rec Society?
Yeah.
When we did a master plan, we provided a budget and it was about $640,000 for all the renovations. This is several years ago.
This was everything.
Yeah. And so we, we had $150,000 for Phase One. $60,000 was matching, but you've managed to get it from a few different places.
Yeah, a lot of places.
So what would you say, $25,000?
I, I, I don't remember at this point.
Okay.
It seems like this has gone on for a...
Yeah, sorry. Well, it's not $60,000, though, that they're spending on Phase One. It's about, I'd say about $30,000.
Yes.
I feel comfortable saying...
Yeah, I've filed with the Wayne County Community Foundation, a bunch, who, I never can think of his name, John Bellum and, and other foundations to get the matching money.
And the county, act 13.
And the county's, uh, $20,000 and the Hokelno Mountains, $2,000 to do the sign and, you know...
Yeah, just chipping away. She's done a really good job of trying to work and keep that number lower. Um, and then this is another $52,000 to match the $250,000 to make sure we can build all of Phase Two. Um, so, right now, as it's written, if we don't work together to try to get a little more money...
Yeah.
It would be an $80,000 commitment for $400,000.
So an $80,000 commitment from the borough?
Okay. It, it would actually be $480,000. That, that $400,000 is all money received.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's $80,000 just from the borough to come in?
Correct. Right now, we have time, because we haven't been awarded this one, to maybe work some magic, talk to the county again, go to EMBD.
And I think I should apply to see if the waiver...
Yeah.
Some of it, or all of it.
They'll, they'll, they'll waive it, but they're only gonna give us $250,000. So if something costs $300,000 and we only have the $250,000 because we asked for a waiver, I'll be in here pulling my hair out because we don't have enough money.
Oh, okay.
If you guys decide, hey, we won't do the, uh, basketball court or we won't do the train this time.
Yeah.
It's all a kind of a game.
Yes.
Hurry up and wait.
Yeah.
All right, so we need a motion for the resolution. Somebody make it and then, uh, Shelley, you sign for the...
I'm the secretary.
What?
It says secretary.
Oh, it says secretary, yeah. I'm sorry, tonight the secretary isn't here. Neither is the solicitor, so...
Okay. Um, I can give it to her, please. Uh, I need, because we, uh, I'm also gonna need a letter of commitment that says, um, you guys are asking for a waiver or you're willing to pay that $25,000 and, uh, that you're fully committed to the project. That's another requirement to the grant.
Okay, well, in the meantime, we just need a motion.
I, I'm wondering, um, that, uh, grant that was just announced from Penn State and, uh, that grant, I wonder if we could apply to them for $30,000 extra? You know who I need?
Oh, no.
I, I have it in my suitcase over here.
Okay. Well, you can give me a call or like, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can try. Good.
That's new because that, it will know in, you know, six weeks whether we get it or not.
Oh, okay.
It's one of the, it's a fastie, which is very unusual. So we need a motion. I, I gave the first motion. Will somebody else do the motion for the resolution?
I'll make a motion to... And do the resolution for the Phase Two of Wayside Park. It is Resolution 2025-2.
Teresa made a motion. Donnie seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nays, abstentions, motion passes. I'll get these to Heather and Chris for it.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Um, I'll just touch base with you earlier this week. Um, the, the resolution and that stuff just time since...
Well, I, I'll be glad, I, I don't have any other meetings this week, so if you can get those signatures, I'll take, I'll be glad to take the papers down.
Okay. We can do that. Thank you very much.
I'll leave these here a little bit.
Sure.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
For years we wanted to upgrade the park and now it's gonna happen.
All right, everyone get a chance to peek at the minutes of this previous meeting.
I make motion to accept the minutes as written.
Teresa made a motion, Donnie seconded it, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Nays, abstentions, passes. The bill is... Yep, um, so we do have one official from the doors, the, uh, from Northeast Door. The project was, it's probably about 98% complete. The reason being, we have to be responsible for the electrical to the doors on the, uh, on the, uh, on our building. The ambulance building had existing garage door openers, so the electric was there. But our building didn't.
Yes.
So we have to run some 20 amp breaker and just some power to it and then Northeast Doors can come back and finish. So, I don't know what you guys think? Do we hold a little bit of money on them until the project? Because we, we have to get some money in there to do work and then Northeast Door will come back.
Well, yes, I, I don't feel it's finished, so... We've already shown our goodwill by giving them half the money.
We also have to move a little bit of ductwork.
Yeah.
But it's not a big job. It's something that we can do.
I agree, I think we should wait.
I have a question on the doors. If you put new doors in the borough garage and they put all molding around, are they gonna put new molding around the outside? Like the weather strip looks terrible, but with the all molding.
I didn't notice, I'll have to look.
And on the material shed, the garage doors on the side where they put aluminum?
Yeah.
If you look at the right side of both doors, they're bulging on it. The aluminum is bulging on the bottom.
Hmm, okay. On the doors itself?
Not the doors.
Oh, like jam?
Yeah. There's a jam about this much on the front of it, pushed out on both right sides.
Well, that Z should be told to take care of that.
But they should put new, uh, molding on their garage because one door don't have any molding at all. So that's, it's like an insulator tool.
Okay.
Weather strip, whatever you wanna call. But they're, and that kinda money on new doors, maybe all molding.
So, um, what do you think, hold five grand? Any objections? Any thoughts? Hold a little bit of money, any? Because we, we put 15, um, 50% down, so we paid them 17.7. Remaining bill is 17.7.
I think we should wait until the project's finished and it's finished correctly.
Well, it's 90 whatever percent done, so I know they're carrying the cost of the doors.
But if it's bulging, it obviously needs to be fixed.
Well, that's on the other project. That's, the bulging is on the material shed. Yeah.
So we'll have Z to do that.
So is, is that because...
We're calling back.
I don't know, I, I have to give.
Is that because of the, the installment of the shed, or is that the installment of the doors that did it?
That looks like the flashing or whatever you wanna call it. When they, when they brought it down, then they, it was put in concrete. And it was, wasn't cut short enough. So as it went down, the concrete, the sand, the aluminum sort of buckled.
They shouldn't have.
You can see that, you can see that. But it's, it's funny, it's on both right sides of the two doors, not the left side. It's very nervous.
Okay. Um, so the Northeast Door, so we owe them seventeen-seven, if you hold a little bit of money on them, because they, they still have to come back to finish, but we also have to get work done. We gotta move the ductwork and power them up, and then they have to come back and put everything else on.
And they will have the clicker?
Yeah, yep, um, the ambulance is all good, is good to go. They, they tried everything, it doesn't work.
Okay. Uh, burrow garages, there's certain places that they're going to put those clickers every time so that that somebody doesn't stick it in their pocket and go home with it?
Oh, gosh, I hope not.
Oh, God, sure.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to them about that.
We, you know, with different people going in there.
Right.
We need to have one established place for it.
Mm-hmm.
You're also gonna have bumpers in there too, right?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're there, they're, they're on the side, they're on the wall. Yep, so can't lose those remotes, I don't know if they were anything, if it was up to my kids, they'd be long gone.
So, so our balance is what?
Twelve-seven.
No, seventeen-seven.
It'd be seventeen-seven, but if we withhold five.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Twelve-seven.
Mm-hmm.
Withhold five or send them five?
Five until the project is one hundred percent completed, and then, um, that would be a remainder of twelve thousand seven hundred. That would be in addition tonight.
Can we send them five and then have a remainder of twelve?
I mean, they're carrying the cost of the doors.
I don't know.
Yeah. And, and really, the rest, the remaining of the work is really on us to get done. We're basically holding them up, because we don't have.
My question is, where's the money coming from?
For the electrical, the power?
For the, for the twelve thousand, and where is it coming from? You know, we haven't got the reimbursement yet, so where, what are we paying it with? We must be paying it from people's salaries and everything else, or else.
Do you want my phone to roll along here? Are we all right with that, Shelley, twelve-seven?
I mean, you know, it's up to you guys, we have a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two-seventy-eight in the bank account.
Mm-hmm.
So as long as we get that grant soon.
Yeah, how, how long is the, what's the wait?
And then that's no.
It depends whether they ask questions, like they did with the material shed.
Okay.
I know I won't have any trouble getting the money for the, uh, the life packs.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because.
Pretty sun-dried.
Yeah, and they didn't do any work.
Yeah.
You know, which, they bought a product, you know? So that's gonna be easy, but then everything else is gonna be questionable. In like prevailing ways that we've been talking about.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So if something, God forbid, happens and they say, you did something wrong, or we don't get that grant, we're, we're screwed, thirty-four thousand dollars. We're out.
I think that they'll.
But that's not us, we can't, we can't pay Northeast Door.
I mean, they have awarded that money to us. It's just that.
It's just a matter of it getting here, no?
We need to justify it, but I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
I'll be able to pay the bill. Okay, uh, minus five thousand. Okay. Motion made by man, uh, Randy, sorry.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Teresa, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nays, extension, motion passes. Uh, police report, chief, howdy.
All right, how are you, all right?
Wonder for yourself?
Can't complain, not yet. Let's see, the police report, um, and the vehicles, we had one, disabled vehicles, two. Hit and run, hit and runs, we had one, uh, assistant other police agencies, we had two. And, uh, suspicious persons, two, deaths, we had two, traffic warnings, one, eight ongoing investigations, and twenty-eight total calls for the month.
Twenty-one. Any question for the chief?
Let's get rid of it.
Mm-hmm, that's good.
Yeah, let's all agree with you too.
Yeah.
No questions, but I would like to thank both of you for this past couple weeks. I appreciate you.
Gentlemen, I have an announcement. My turn. Um, real quick, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, we have a resignation within the department. Um, our dog is getting up there in age, we've decided to retire him, his vision is getting very bad. Um, he's unable to jump into the vehicle safely anymore, so for his well-being, um, as of the beginning of this month, he is resigning from his position and retiring from the department, so. Assistant Chief Shaker wanted to be here to make the announcement, I have a letter for council if you guys need it. The mayor already put one under your door for you. Um, it's been a good eight years with him, but he's gonna be eleven now, and it's, it's time, so. Um, we're thankful that he was here, for the training requirements and everything else he's just not able to do, so. Just wanted to let everybody know that he is retiring as of, as of today, so.
Will there be another?
No. Um, unfortunately, with the training requirements and the time that it takes now, that, that Mopec is requiring us to do, there's, there's just no feasible way that we'd be able to do it and be efficient and keep, keep him certified, whoever it would be, eventually maybe down the line, but right now, we're not even looking at doing it. I think it would be a great idea, but.
We could apply for the county, right? We could apply to the county and they would bring the dog up here?
Yeah, there's, there's other options that we have, we can get ahold of PSP, um, there's a few other dogs in the area, there's one down in Lehigh. So I mean, we can do that, but, yeah. County is like one, has got one. We at least got one, there's a few, it's just, it was nice having him.
I think we also should thank the veterinarian.
Yes, there was a lot of people involved.
For Amanda Johnson especially, because she gave her services.
Yeah, she donated all his vet care, we have a bunch of letters gonna go out for thanking people. Um, we had an anonymous donor for all his food over all these years, up until recently, so there was a lot of support behind him, so I just wanted to thank everybody for your support as well. And maybe somewhere down the line we'll do it again, but for now, we're gonna be without a dog.
And Darryl, Darryl gave his.
Yes, Darren, Darren has donated his salary to us for the dog every month, so. Thank you to him as well, so, um, I'll leave a copy of this in Heather's mailbox, and like I said, Mr. Mayor, I have one for you already in your office.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Eric, thanks, you.
Thank you.
Fire company?
Um, I have the report, but it's on my phone, and I'm doing the live with my phone.
Okay.
I, I was waiting for Josh, hopefully he'll see Messenger and send it through that, but this wasn't working for the live, for whatever reason, so I have it, but it's up there.
She did, you have to give it when we close the meeting.
Okay.
Give it then.
Mayor's report?
I'm good.
Zoning officer, hey, Joe.
At, uh, at fourth place, two zoning permits issued, both for fences. Uh, one new conditional use hearing that was just, uh, that we're working on right now, we'll get advertised. I posted it today, actually. Um, I wrote two orders, a quality of life and a pay cut, we'll talk about later. I just sent right through, I issued, uh, I enforced one store wire permit. Uh, I sent one note to violation for an illegal truck terminal, and I, I've been playing phone tag with that guy for the last two days. And then, uh, there, I have one outstanding violation letter that, uh, yeah, I don't know if the guy's gonna respond. Mike Bartley down the road here.
Okay.
That's all. That's what I'm at.
Busy.
Yeah, it's been busy.
Yeah.
Been busy the last couple days, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's the season.
It may as well be a busy month.
That mattress now has been there for eight weeks now, across the road, plus the chest of drawers, plus all that other stuff there.
Well, that's the quality of life ordinance, so we'll find them.
That's where we're gonna get to. Um, in a, in a few moments.
Is there a copy of that?
Yeah. Quality of life?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have one too.
I don't, I don't have one here, I can't hit to my phone.
Um, where are we at? Solicitor's report, he is absent. Excuse, where? Correspondence?
I don't know, unless it's.
Oh, so that was, that was a check that I just gave you.
Yes.
Uh, we got the deposit for the food locker.
I had the ambulance one too, but I don't even know where it is.
Um, guests and citizens. John Potowski.
Hi.
Hey, John.
Um, my name is John Potowski, I'm a resident of Waymar Burrow, and I'm also on the Waymar Burrow planning commission. Um, I submitted a letter, I mailed it in last week, I don't know if you got it or not, but, um, basically says, to Waymar Burrow Council on May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, I will be resigning from my position on the Waymar Burrow planning commission. There have been changes in my life today to focus on, and to try to take care of, one being me. Um, and I would like to thank Waymar Burrow Council for the opportunity to serve in this position, and for the knowledge I gained in doing so. Um, I hope you accept it.
Nope.
In serving this position, I learned a lot. And a lot of things bothered me. And one of the things that bothered me was that I sat in on a couple hearings, and people came in and they violated our zoning, and they tried to violate our or- ordinances and our zoning. And we sit here and we complain about ordinances as mattresses and dogs crap in people's yards and stuff like that. But when we have our own government, our own Wayne County government, Wayne County Housing Authority, come in here and want to violate ten of our ordinances, plus our zoning, and nobody questions it. Nobody says anything about it. And, and I sit back and I, I'm thinking to myself, these are our ordinances, this is what makes our town. These are our zonings. This, this is what makes our town. And we sit here and we don't question people. And when people say that they're unreasonable, they're not. They're not unreasonable at all. They're unreasonable to him or to that organization because they wanna put something where it doesn't belong. And as a citizen here, and as a, as a resident here, I'm, I'm, I'm bothered by that. I'm bothered by the fact that Waymar Burrow Council doesn't speak up and defend what we have in writing, what we have on our map. And you, you gotta voice yourself. I mean, I, I did it, and whether you're right, wrong, whether you don't know, whether you do know, whether it's a stupid question, whatever, you, you got, you, you gotta, you gotta support, you gotta support what you have. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta fight for what you have. You just can't give it up. Because if you give up one ordinance, if you give up any of these ten ordinances here, then, then a, a mattress doesn't matter anymore. A, a dog crap in somebody's yard doesn't matter anymore. You know, you, you can't pick and choose what ordinances you wanna enforce. And when, when your own county government comes in here, the Waymar County, the Waymar County Housing Authority comes in here and they want to violate our ordinances and our zoning, and we sit here and we're quiet about it. Can't do that. You can't. And, and I would love to stay in this position and fight. It's just me, and, and I just, I don't need that stress right now in my life. And I really appreciate, and if I'm wrong, please tell me. I've learned more in my life from being wrong than being right. And if I'm wrong from what I'm saying right now, let me know.
No, I think, I, first of all, I'm sorry to hear that, that you're, you don't, you wanna step down. I, I, first time you hear about it, and I don't wanna accept it, but we will, of course, if that's your wishes. Um, but secondly, the conditional use hearing, it's not over yet. And I think there was a lot of good questions asked, uh, by, by most of us, um, during that conditional use hears, but hearing, but that's the process. It's not over yet, so.
Could I interrupt you one second?
Yeah, sure.
Are, are we talking about the conditional use for the Wayne County Housing Authority?
Yeah, but, which is the conditional use now.
That hearing was, that hearing was supposed to be a conditional use here.
Mm-hmm.
But it wasn't.
Well, it was, it started off as a conditional use hearing.
But it was changed.
In the middle of the hearing.
Yes.
And we should've just.
And we, and we allowed that to happen.
Well.
And we should've allowed that to happen.
I don't know, I'm not sure exactly.
We should've shut it down right then and there.
Everything could be changed.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
We should've shut that right down, right then and there.
Well, we should've put a wood up, we didn't, but.
I know, I understand that, but that's, that's why, that's why you have, that's why you have voices, that's why you have to speak up. Whether, whether you're right or wrong, you, you gotta speak up, you, you have to, you have to defend what you have. And, and that's all I'm saying, is you just have to defend it. I mean, there's a lot of things here that, I, I went home and I beat myself up, and I, and I went through every one of them, and I thought to myself, you know, when somebody says something's not reasonable, it is reasonable. You know, when you're, when they wanna put a building up that our fire department can't really handle, because we don't have a ladder truck, I, that's, like, right off the bat, that's no good. You know, like, there's a lot of things that we, we, that you have to, you know, pick apart, and pick, pick what they're saying apart, you know, and, and question everything, and put them on the spot. You know, these, I don't know. I just think that we have a, a great, great community here, you know, and, and I, I think you're doing great things with, with ballparks and with, with a, a, a play park here in, in, in town and everything like that. And I just don't think we should give up reasons why we have what we have.
We, you're not wrong, the ordinances and zoning are there for a reason, but you also have to give people due process. Right, so.
Exactly.
The process is still playing out, so that process isn't over yet.
Exactly.
So it's still in limbo.
But you have, but as, as as, um, members here, you, you have to speak up.
And I think we.
And when they go around and ask everybody questions and nobody has a question, I'm like, think.
I think a lot of us have questions, I, I disagree with you there. I think a lot of us did have some good questions, I think there was a lot of questions asked, you wouldn't wait in there for questions always. Um, but the process isn't over yet, so we have to allow that process to play through. And if we don't, then we'd be jammed up in certainly bigger problems, so.
Um, but what I'm saying is, if, if you speak up early, it could, it could stop that process.
Well, technically, we can't.
No, you can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, not, you can't stop that pro, but you could stop, you could, you could convince them that it's not gonna work here.
Oh, I agree, and I think a lot of those questions were asked, and they have to justify why they want to go through those ten ordinances, or I think there were more ordinances, and why we should allow them to, to overlook those ordinances, but the process isn't done yet, so I really don't know. We can't really talk about too much of it, I guess, because we really, it's not over.
I know.
For the shore.
I understand that.
I don't know where it's gonna go.
I just think that, I, I think council should fight.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming in, that one.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate what you did for the community and.
I appreciate, I appreciate giving me the opportunity, I learned a lot, believe me, I did.
Mm-hmm.
And thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm here.
Yep, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Andrew, is that, the next guy? What? What's that?
We have to make a motion to accept his resignation.
Oh, okay.
Or not.
I mean, or not.
Me too, but.
But, okay. Well, he wants to resign, so we have to accept it, so motion to accept John's.
I make a motion to accept John Potowski's resignation.
I'll second it.
Motion was ma- made by Jane, seconded by Teresa, all in favor? Aye. Nays?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any extensions? Okay. Motion passes, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Um, next, the guy for guests and citizens. Is it Andrew, is that your name?
Mine.
Oh, Dave?
Davin.
Oh, Davin, I couldn't read that, I'm sorry.
No, you just, you know, you did skip over me, but we can go back.
What, what do you have?
Let him, let him go, and then you can come back. Nope, go ahead.
You're not yes.
Uh, I just wanna start off by saying thank you to, uh, Mayor Norella. Um, my name's Davin Good, I'm from Prequem Home Sale. I am a boy scout there, um, working my way towards Eagle. And the last step for me to do that was to complete a service project, of which, uh, Mayor Norella allowed me to build the raised beds behind the, uh, borough building here. Um, I noticed someone has already planted some stuff in there, so, uh, I just wanna thank him and the rest of the council, um, for allowing me to do that. So that'll help me with my last step of becoming Eagle, so.
That looks great.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Question, who's going to take care of it?
Whoever plans it. We have someone.
Well, I think we just want on the record, who's going to take care of it?
Our neighbor.
I appreciate your project, it's a very good project.
Thank you, hopefully it is good use to the community, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job you did too.
Yes, your work is beautiful. You did a nice job.
Do you have to get a letter from us or something to present to the DUCI Board for Eagle?
I do not. I think I have everything. So, thank you.
Teresa?
Sorry, I just, go ahead. Well, we were talking about the doors and I thought that you had moved down to committees, but you didn't.
Oh, so keep going? Are you, okay. So committees?
If that's where you're at, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's where we're heading.
But when we were talking about the doors and stuff, I thought we had started committees, so I was like, wait a minute.
Do you want me to look into this box?
I've been up since three o'clock. It's been a long day.
Committee reports. Jane? Okay.
Well, I'm happy to report about the Bob Wilson Field, that all the work that Pioneer has done, the infield, which they've done a lot there, and also Mella, who has the contract for the lights. I talked to both of them and this rainstorm did not cause any problem to the work that they have done to this point. The water that was there, those of you who drive down the railroad bed, that's the steam railroad bed, the D and H steam railroad bed. The, whatever it was, all the water that came off RDW property and partly Salvation Army property, that comes down along the D and H railroad bed, that unfortunately, our, what we had put in, the pipes that we had put in, was not adequate. So we're going to have to replace the two pipes there. Then the water goes underneath the D and H railroad bed. And so the water did not affect the field at all, which I'm very thankful for. But we do have a real problem about replacing the pipes eventually. And Joe was down there, our engineer, and he has been working with Justin Cromko, who was in charge of the Pioneer project. And of course, we talked about six overhead doors and we talked about the life packs. We're going along. I'd like to finish up some of these, like the material shed, I'd like to finish it up and get the money. But there's a couple of questions they sent to us. They accepted everything I submitted so far. I have to submit by email. So PDF has to be done first and then the email to there. And they had a couple of questions we have to answer before we get the money for the material shed. So we're going to finish up with three of these grants very soon. That's it.
Short and sweet tonight, Jane.
Not sweet, that's fine.
We do have a little bit of correspondence. So one from Aqua. In accordance with the renewal terms of the above bond, a new bond is required by the obligee. Please check the attached documents carefully. If signatures are required. Street opening surey bond. Okay, so that's just an updated bond. Waymore Borough.
What is it a bond for? So we do have an ordinance.
No, they didn't pull for that or anything. But this is just a renewal.
What does a renewal?
Renewal terms of this bond.
Does that give them the terms that they can open up the street whenever they want?
I don't, maybe they have a bond out on a project?
Do you remember? Do any of you remember?
I don't know, Joe, you want to think of this?
He, the guy told me that they have just a universal bond that they use wherever they.
Oh, okay, so this is.
And that just, that kind of just covers them while they're doing the work.
They could blank it.
So they can just open up anytime?
That's why we have the paved cut ordinance now.
Right. Well, that's right. This is from N-Tech. Good afternoon, Waymore Borough and staff. I'm working with Aqua. This is from Jeremy Clark, engineering designer. I'm working with Aqua Pennsylvania Incorporated, so maybe that's the bond's part. On an upcoming project, they will be completing in conjunction with proposed PennDOT work along the Van Ocking Creek crossing on Belmont Street. I wanted to reach out for the borough's latest road opening requirements and hope a copy could be emailed to me. The latest permitting documents we have in file are from Sleepy Hollow MR Project 2020. And I wanted to ensure I have the latest permit application for an upcoming submission. I appreciate your help, Jeremy. And that's it.
I don't answer him if we're going to pass that ordinance.
Okay. Teresa?
FEMA grant update. All of my paperwork that was submitted, they said that it all looks great. They have passed it on to the grant committee. I'm waiting to hear back from them. I got a bid from Waco and it was below the threshold, so we only needed the one. And it was for $10,300 and it would be to remove the debris from our creek from East Street down to South Street by the lumberyard. As soon as I hear from the grant committee that the money is on its way or Shelley says it's in the account, I will then contact Waco and they're going to take care of contacting the Conservation District and stuff like that. They'll get the permits and we're going to get that part of the creek, the debris cleaned out. So hopefully, it will minimize our flooding situation greatly.
So they're going to get in the ditch?
Yes, in the creek. Yep, and the rock, what kind of stone is that? And they're not big rock.
Ripper?
That's going to stay.
He knows, he makes it.
They're just taking all of the debris out. So everything looks good. We're just waiting to hear from that committee.
Thank you for all your time.
And thank you for your help. You helped me too, so. You know, but I was pretty excited when they told me that it was approved because it's my first grant ever. So, and the only other thing I have is an update on the budget. The police is doing very well with their budget. Public Works is doing better, but still have to be careful. There's only not quite $4,000 for them to work with until the end of the year. But police officers are doing good. Hopefully, come summer months, we can do a little bit of an increase with their hours. I know there's, I know lawn mowing should be to a minimum this year because there's no field. So, but we just, just got to be a little cautious with the public works and that's all I have. As soon as I hear from FEMA, I will, or from grant committee, I will let everybody know.
Great. Thank you.
That's it.
Good deal. Okay, streets and roads, Shane. That's me. So last meeting, we talked about getting quotes for line painting for crosswalks and parking stalls over by the post office and all the stop bars and which are basically, all of our paint is pretty much non-existent, if anyone's noticed. We haven't done it in, I don't even know, last time we did it.
Absolér.
I don't remember, so it's gone. So I took three contractors around, three line painting contractors. One of them said the job is too big. The other guy just never got back to me and I got one. So that's with universal line painting. We have seventeen crosswalks from down there up to the school, you know, just shy of the school. Hard to believe. Stop bars, there was, well, one at every intersection. Probably another seventeen, I guess, because everywhere there's a stop sign, there's a stop bar. The most expensive part is Route Six, so out at the four corners, there's turning lanes, the arrows aren't there anymore. The crosswalk's going, the cross there, there aren't there anymore. And that has to be hot thermoplastic, so that's cheap basically. They lay on the ground, burn it in. Can't just be paint because you get a year out of it and have to come back and do it. So thermoplastic, you get maybe, who knows how long, a few years out of it, hopefully. So just the intersection, just the Route Six intersection was $10,426.
We never did turn arrows or whatever you want. All we did was the crosswalk. One crosswalk going.
Across the intersection?
Yeah. We did turn.
Nope.
The stop bars are gone.
Stop, we never did that's PennDOT.
Well, we didn't do the stop.
Yeah, we only had a crosswalk.
Just a crosswalk.
And that was on the side of the pizza place.
Well, they did it when they paved it and they haven't come back since. And they paved that what five years ago maybe? So.
We never did that. We used to, Dixon, that gentleman died and his family don't do it, but they used to do it. And we had the hardest time doing it out there because of the traffic and everything. We had the fire company help and we had police when they were on. But we only did the crosswalk.
Okay.
And I think, and I thought that to best of my knowledge, we only did one side and that was from the pizza place because there was a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's the only place that's a sidewalk.
Okay, well, I took them around and showed them everywhere we have sidewalks that meet the roads and where there's the suppression in the sidewalk and there's signs of a crosswalk. So that's what these quotes are. So that intersection is 10,400 and the rest of the town is 4775. No, 5125, I'm sorry.
How about asking Homestead, who they get?
I did. That's like, that was who I got.
That's who that is?
No, no, no. Mayo didn't get back to me. Universal Line Painting, Doug Gumbel, and then Greg Stahl. It's all my stalls.
Homestead has not even half done that. They've been doing it through New York.
Yeah, so anyway, here's the quotes that you guys asked me to get. So let's vote on them. What's up, John?
I have a question.
Yeah.
If it's a state road, why are we required to do that?
Well, so, right, that's a good question because PennDOT, I don't know how long ago, gave us, so PennDOT came through and widened all of 296 for the new prison and put all the drainage in and everything and then turned that all over to the, well, not just Waymore, all the townships and boroughs. If any state road that runs through any township or borough that has, a state road running through that has drainage is now the responsibility of the township or borough. So with no additional money, so. Any catch basin, and the catch basins, how many was there? There's, I don't know, twenty some?
There's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot. That's all on us now. So if one of them fails or breaks down, it's us.
Nineteen?
Yeah.
Nineteen or?
So there was no, there was no liquid fuels or any might?
No.
No.
And not only that, but they passed that in their own manual. They never took it to the legislature. It was never passed by the legislature. They just put it in their manual and said, that's your problem from now on. Because I complained to John about it very vehemently. I said, I don't think it's fair, but.
So line painting quotes.
I would not be willing to pay for the town, but I'm not willing to pay for the intersection.
Well, that was everything. What were the charges for the walk?
At the intersection? I don't know. I'd have to ask him. So he included up there the crosswalks, 336 linear feet of crosswalks, 72 linear feet of stop bars, one 12-foot right turn arrowhead, one eight-foot turning only legend and then traffic control and nothing else.
Yeah, we only ever had crosswalks.
That's all news to me. I didn't even know we had that.
Well, it's not there.
So we don't have it.
I mean, there's remnants of it there, so it's, but anyway, if you guys just want to do the town one, let's just do that one. Town. No. Nope, 5125.
I'm for the town. Of course, I asked you if you'd do what they did in Homestead and town. Railroad tracks.
Oh, the train?
Only because it's the 200, man, talking by anniversary, it's the 200th anniversary of the D and H Gravity. And we're the last.
Is, is, is that? What's the word I'm looking for? I don't know if I want to use the word allowed or not, but can we do that? Because wasn't there a huge write-up, something with Homestead doing the railroad tracks? Wasn't there a big, I remember something being in the paper about them doing railroad tracks.
They still do it though.
Yeah, I know, but.
But I think you have to apply for something.
Yeah, it seems like, yeah, it seems like they had to get permission or something.
Do you remember, Peter? You know what we're talking about?
I remember when I did it, it was quite several years ago.
Did they, did they have to get special permission?
Who would be the person asked? Judy?
Well, he probably wrote it up.
Right.
But it's just too long and all.
I, I agree. It would look really neat, but I don't want to get in trouble doing something.
Well, we could just, we could do it here on this street, on Sandy Street.
Right, right.
Yeah.
You know, that'd be nice for the celebration. We could just do South Street. You know, with the, for the lines for the railroad.
Railroad. I could talk to him.
Yeah.
And they probably, that's all, maybe.
Yeah.
But according to Universal Line Painting, who does quite a few towns and boroughs, see, the streetlights are our responsibility too, so that's a safety issue. So if those go down, it's not ours to get fixed, so. I don't, according to him, the stop bars, the arrows, the turning lane signals, everything, or the turning lane arrows, everything, it's all on, all on the borough, borough's responsibility. I don't know. I didn't call. I just talked to him about it, so.
I never heard that before.
Hey Jane, if you called up the railroad, the office where you do the train reservations, Jeff Hiller
Yeah.
probably answers the phone. He's the one that was behind that.
Okay. I'll call Jeff. Thank you.
Would this be coming out of liquid fuel money?
I'd say go through the town and
the 51.
And tell people they shouldn't go across the road.
Do they?
They have cross.
We might have to ask Wester about that.
They have the buttons, they have the walking signs out there, right?
Thank.
That's sixty.
Yeah, there's just the one.
Yeah.
Then it seems to me if they just have the one, that we don't need to be responsible for that, for that, Tom.
The crosswalk.
I mean, if, if we did do it all and it comes out of liquid fuels, it still leaves over 60,000 in the account.
But then we got to talk about roads.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just going to say.
So then we can't put the cart for the horse, because if we're going to pave or oil and chip, then it wouldn't make any sense to do this.
We're still, we're still waiting for the amount for all of the streets so that I can submit that to the Senator.
Yeah.
She has the first one that you gave. But when I came back and said, what's the total for, to do all the streets? You know, she said, send it in, so there's a possibility that we can get a grant to at least chip all of the roads. Can't do paving, but there's a possibility that we could chip them all instead of just doing those, what, four?
Yeah.
But we need that, I need that total so I can send it to her.
The likelihood of that crank on in this year is probably something I don't know. I can't imagine. I don't know. I mean, I doubt it, but.
If you can, if you can get that to me within the next couple of days, I'll send it to her. If they can't do it, she's going to come back and say, well, we can't do it, but we can do the first one that you sent.
Yeah, well, you guys want to just do the town painting for now?
Yeah.
That's, I agree with Randy.
Now, any of these streets get redone?
I mean, we don't have any plans right now to do any of them, to do any of them.
It's kind of silly to put the lines on and then.
Yeah. No, I agree, but if we're going to wait for the grant to do the work, then you just put that, you just end up paying for it twice because you have to have the contract to do it again.
Do you know what the total is for the, has Jeff gotten back to you yet? Are you able to do it? What do you have to do? Just know the length of each street?
It sounds like we need to put everything on the next month. We don't have any.
Do you, do you got the little machine? I'll go push it. I'll give you your numbers. If you want to do the estimate, I'll walk the streets. I don't care.
It's a regular driver's seat.
You can, you can do it by phone.
Really?
Get it off your Google. All right, what do you guys want to do?
How do you do it?
Want to get this going? Line painting the town?
I think we should do one.
Okay, the town and then just have them do crosswalks across six? I mean, it's going to be more than the 5125, but if we're just going to do, it doesn't have those broke out.
So there's just one crosswalk, right?
Going across six?
Yeah.
I think there's two.
No, there's only, there's only one.
Just one, where the sidewalk goes.
Goes from the pizza place to the railroad.
So there isn't any on 296 to go between?
There's no sidewalk.
Okay.
Of course, there's no sidewalk on the rail either, but.
Yeah, the only sidewalk, we are right, is on.
Oh, no, there's one by the pizza joint too. Because there's a sidewalk there.
Yeah, that's, that's the only one.
That's the only one.
Yeah. Okay, let's get a motion for the town and keep moving. Okay, let's get a motion for the town. We keep moving.
But do you, do you think we should, what he said, Jeff, we better.
Well, I don't think, even if we got the measurements, when would they actually award the grant? You know how long a grant takes?
I don't.
Take five years.
That's a.
We don't have any roads left.
I don't know who's on the committee, but I think they should go around the safety.
That would be through Rosemary.
And, and decide which streets we want to have done, if any. Maybe we won't have any.
For paving?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, would the grant, I, I, I don't think the grant's gonna happen this year, or I can't imagine. The, the way the grants move?
Oh, yeah, I know. It always is.
Yeah.
Drives me, that, that drives me right up the wall.
I'll make a motion to have Universal Line Painting come in.
Okay.
And do the borough, not, we're not gonna do the Route Six, or we are.
I, I don't know. I, it's according to him, it's up to us because the stoplights are up to us. That, that, that's safety.
That's like $10,000.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Let that go.
Okay.
Let's do it about that.
And wait and let it.
And let's do the borough for the $5,000 or $25,000.
Yeah, uh, 51.25.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Randy, seconded by Jane, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nays, abstentions. Motion passes. Okay. Follow-up discussion of paving in the borough. I think we already covered that. Um, Shayna isn't here. You tell Lee's gone. Purchasing randy?
Nothing.
All right, unfinished business. With the design, we did that. Uh, motion to apply for grant, we did that. Resolution submitting grant, we did that. Spring cleanup. Any, uh, did anybody get any prices on dumpsters?
I think Darren got one from Ghost.
Oh, did he?
When we were still here, last meeting.
I had to put it off another month because he's not here.
I don't remember what he said it was. 399?
The thing is, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be passing things that aren't in the budget.
Yeah, I don't think we talked about that, did we?
No, we didn't.
Last time the cost was what, 1,500 bucks?
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
I don't remember either.
Was it?
Something like that.
We talked about raising the cost.
Yeah. Of course, you never know how much it's gonna cost because you don't know what people's gonna ask. The only thing they were charged for were tires, actually.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's up to $4 now too.
So we can't do anything because you don't have any costs on that. Just go.
How is the recycling going? Do you have people doing it?
Yeah, they're doing it.
Okay.
There's too much plastic in the world.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're on to, uh, new business. So new business, we have, uh, two new ordinances that our zoning enforcement officer, Joe Eunice, um, wrote up for us. Two of them, in my opinion, which I think we should really seriously consider adopting. Joe, please, I'll try to explain them to the best of my ability, but please cut me off and jump in. The first one is, uh, application for excavation permits. So, um, I don't know how many times you see the utility contractor on our streets, cutting open the, the roads and doing the thing, and we, most of them don't even know they're here. And, uh, sometimes they don't come back, sometimes they do, some will be great, some of them not so great, and we don't have a leg to stand on to get them to come back to fix their utility trenches. So Joe had brought to our attention about adopting an ordinance, um, that requires utility contractors. So basically, utility contractors use the borough's streets. We allow them to, we facilitate their utilities. So their, their water line, sewer line, uh, I don't know, gas.
So everything runs through a hurdle right of way.
Right, yeah, and have, we, we don't, we're not able to really, we have no control of them. They kinda just do what they want. So this, it's not that we want any control of them. We just like to know what's going on when they're doing it, just.
We wanna make sure the roads are repaired correctly.
That, that too. That's pretty much the biggest thing is we just want the roads repaired. Do what you wanna do, but just make us aware of it and then come back and fix the roads. It's, should be pretty simple. So, um, passing this ordinance, um, well, we can't pass it tonight. We have to vote to advertise for it for two weeks and then vote on it in, at the next meeting. And, um, then we'll send letters out to UGI, Aqua and everything.
All the utilities.
Yeah, I think most towns probably have this ordinance already.
They do.
Um, we just, you know, we're, we're getting there. We're catching up, right? We're, we're doing our best.
Is that fee in line with other?
That's a standard fee.
That's a tariff fee?
Um, is there anything else you wanna add to this one, Joe?
No, it's just that every, like, pretty much every time that they even, like, put a blade in the road, they're gonna have to come get a permit. You know, and we'll allow them to do the work, but they'll be, each company will be bonded for a certain amount of money. They'll have to, like, put up a bond to, to guarantee that the work can be done correctly. You know, and this way we can hold their feet to the fire if it's not. This will give us that leg stand on, which we, you know, don't really have right now, so.
Well said, that was well put, better than my, way I said it. So, um, if we can have a motion, if, if, if there's any questions, let's, we'll chat about that first, but um, otherwise, I would request a motion to be made for, uh, an ordinance to, um, for the application for excavation permits.
I make a motion.
To advertise.
To advertise.
Yeah.
Um, the pave cut ordinance. For two weeks and to be voted on at next meeting.
Okay, motion was made by Teresa, seconded by Donnie, all in favor? Aye, nays, abstentions, motion passes. Um, okay, so that's the first one. The second one, Joe, I'm gonna lean on you a little bit to help me explain it. But I think I've peeled through both of these. Uh, feel free, if anybody wants to read this, I have another copy.
Because you have the only copy because somebody robbed my car and stole my, all my stuff and that was a part of it.
Oh, no!
So I don't have any of the ordinances I wrote.
Well, we'll give you another.
I might, I might have a digital copy somewhere.
You gave me, you gave me copies.
Those are older ones. This is a revised.
Yeah, this is an old one. Is there a revised one in there on the, the desk?
Yeah, I, I think I have that one.
Yeah, Shane has.
Yeah, this looks old. Is this?
Uh, yeah, that's the one, I think. That's the one I emailed to everybody.
Why would somebody take that?
I don't know. It's in my clipboard. I'm more mad about that than anything else.
Somebody made mad good permits.
Maybe they thought, they were gonna get money here.
Uh, so the second ordinance here that Joe kindly wrote up for us is called the Quality of Life, um, ordinance. And, um, I mean, you could probably explain this better.
We currently have one, but like the steps to get to the end are a lot. Like, you, you instead of like, like I'd have to write a letter and then I have to give them 30 days to appeal. Then they, then they get a chance to appeal to, to the board, or super, you guys. So then you guys have to sit in at a hearing, right? Makes, it, it makes no sense. Like, instead, I just wanna go right to the magistrate. Skip all the nonsense and, you know, put the screws to the people right off the bat. Get compliance. And then if they comply, I withdraw the charges. Everybody's happy. They don't comply, I, every day I just write a new fine. And every day is considered a new, a separate offense. So that's how I wrote it.
So it, it, anytime there's a complaint, it's, there's, the mattresses, they can clean it up. Really, Joe's hands are tied. Um, this would allow him to actually physically go to the magistrate rather than, um, have to come to us and just go through, jump through so many hoops just to get a mattress cleaned up or, I don't know.
Whatever the case may be, high grass, you know, anything like that, cars for sure, which is why, the main reason why I put this for the cars.
Question, if you have a property like the one down here that's next to our magistrate, and I mean next to our solicitor, if they don't clean it up, are we responsible to get somebody to clean it up?
No, but we, we could do that and we can, we can do the abatement ourselves and then we can, uh, put a real estate lien on the property to get our money back. Not in this ordinance.
So it's not in this ordinance?
No.
Okay.
And the, the mayor said something about you have to have your cans out at a certain time or something?
Well, your garbage cans, you can't give them out all week.
Oh, okay. I, that's.
Yeah, you wanna make sure that they, they put out the night before or take it in when your garbage is taken. You can't have them sitting out for seven days.
But some, I mean, we can find a spot, but there are some people that really don't have anywhere else to put them. Aside from back off the road at Littleways. I mean, like, they just don't have room. I know, like, the one neighbor up the street from me, theirs sits, it's up against their house, but it's still within the, it's still within the right of way.
Yeah, but I mean, unless it's not in the road. The prob, that's where the, the problem lies. You don't want your garbage can made in the middle of the road for seven days.
But on the, the side of the road, it's okay with that.
It's not, you know.
As long as somebody's not gonna hit with their car, it's okay.
As long as it's not a problem.
Okay.
Then it's not a problem. And if it turns into a problem, then it's a problem.
But if it's in the road or if it's on top of a catch basin where water can't go down into it, that's an issue. Okay.
Couldn't be in the road anyhow, right, Joe? Exactly.
Okay, so, uh, any other questions on the Quality of Life ordinance?
So, so what is the penalty?
Anywhere from a hundred to a thousand dollars a day fine.
So you'd have to cite somebody every day?
I could do that, yeah.
Is that a, is that a fine or is that a lien?
It's a fine.
Fine.
The lien, if we did an abatement, that's not written in that, like that.
Okay.
I have a problem with that every day. What if somebody's sick or if somebody's not here or?
What if the mattress has been sitting out for six months?
At the case by case basis.
Common sense.
It's a, yeah, like, I got a brain, I can.
Pass the ordinance.
Yeah.
No, not to pass it, but advertise.
To advertise Quality of Life ordinance. To advertise.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Randy, seconded by Teresa, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, motion passes. Okay, I think that's all she wrote. Anything else? I don't think so. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
It's true.
Here's the, the ambulance report, and you were gonna do the report for the fire department.
I can't.
Well, we don't have to be on there. Goodbye, everybody who's watching.
Let me see.
The Waymore Fire Company's chicken barbecue is someday.